Pursuant to Section 84-1411 of the Nebraska statutes, notice of this meeting was given on June 1st, 2018. The meeting will convene at 6:40 PM and visitors may obtain a request to be heard form from staff for any presentation they may have for the meeting. In accordance with policy, the request to be heard form must be submitted to the secretary within the first five minutes of the board meeting in order to be heard at this meeting. Agenda items are subject to reordering at the discretion of the board president, so
Board of Education of Douglas County School District 0001 and the Board of Educational Service Unit Number 19 will be held on Monday, June 18th at 6:30 PM in the board meeting room of the Teacher Administrative Center, 3215 Cummings Street. The agenda will be kept current and available for public inspection in the office of the Secretary of Board of Education at the administrative building during regular working hours. Pursuant to Section 84-1412 of Nebraska statutes, the public is hereby informed that a current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted in the board meeting room on the north wall. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Vice President America will lead us in the OPS vision and mission statement.
First, our vision, every student, every day, prepared for success. And our mission, Omaha Public Schools prepares all students to excel in college, career, and life.
Roll call, please.
Here.
Gadding.
I'm present, but I don't know my.
Holman.
Here.
America.
Present.
Proman.
Here.
Ryan.
Present.
Scanlon. Smith.
Here.
Snow.
Here.
Eight present.
Thank you. Mr. Scanlon has informed us that he had a prior work conflict prior to tonight's board meeting, so he will not be joining us tonight. Up next, we have school spotlight with Ms. Monique Farmer.
Good evening, Board President Snow, members of the board, and Superintendent Evans. We are pleased to present this evening our top OPS 2018 Science Fair awardees from the Metro Science and Engineering Fair and the Greater Nebraska Science and Engineering Fair as tonight's OPS Proud Spotlight. In March, nearly 300 of our students, grades 6 through 12, representing 23 public, private, and home school students from Douglas, Washington, Sarpy Counties competed at the 36th Annual Metropolitan Science and Engineering Fair. OPS was represented by students from nine middle schools, four high schools, and the Zoo Academy. Top projects from 17 categories received plaques, cash prizes of $50, in advance to the Nebraska Junior Academy of Science, held at Nebraska Wesleyan University in April. Seventh grader Hope Lowe from McMillan placed in the top 10 in the state middle school division. Eleventh graders Christina Gilmore and Bria Gilmore from Central High School placed in the top 10 in the state high school division. Christina and Bria are also invited to present at the American Junior Academy of Sciences this upcoming February in Washington DC, and they will have their research published by the American Association for Advancement of Science. Other OPS students who qualified for and participated at Nebraska Junior Academy of Science were Malik Jones from North High, Imani Butler from King Science Magnet Center, and Evelyn Brown from Buffett. Kevin McGee from Davis Middle School was awarded the Aritia Hosing, sorry, let me re-pronounce that, Aretha Hazing Award for the top sixth grade project, and the Sneha Sengupta Award went to, I'm sorry, was awarded the Dave Dow Award of Excellence. A top project that did not automatically qualify for the Nebraska Junior Academy Sciences receives this honor. This award is named after and sponsored by the founder of the Metro Science and Engineering Fair. We salute these students for their accomplishments this spring, and I would now like to invite Dr. Chris Shaven, Supervisor of Science, to the podium.
President Snow, Superintendent Evans, and members of the board, thank you for this opportunity to present just a few of the top students in science research here in the Omaha Public Schools. Let me take a quick moment to say thank you to the Board of Education and to the Sherwood Foundation. Ten years ago, we noticed our students would compete but not with inconsistent results in terms of outcomes, and so we set about a competitions grant 10 years ago. Fast forward to today, and Mr. Dan Sitzman, who's here with me, is currently a science coach for Omaha Public Schools, and he continued this work with his own endeavor to support student research and science. So, Daniel Sitzman.
Thank you, Dr. Shaven. Over the past three years, thanks to the K-12 Comprehensive Science Teaching Grant, under the direction of Dr. Shaven, Lead Science Teacher Christina Wildhagen, and elementary supervisors Cindy Brown and Emily Hughes, science instructional coaches have increased the support of teachers and students preparing for science fairs, including at Bryan Middle School, Norris Hale, Lewis and Clark, Rose Hill Elementary, Virtual School, Morton, Burke, and Bryan High, as well as the schools represented here tonight, Davis, King Science, Buffett, Zoo Academy, Central High, and North High. Engaging all students in opportunities to research and to communicate results, whether at competitive science fairs or through non-competitive experiences, aligns with the new Nebraska College and Career Ready Standards for Science. The students tonight represent our district's diversity. In the past five years, OPS students qualifying for the American Junior Academy of Sciences include the first African-American male from Nebraska, the first African-American females from Nebraska, and the first Native American student from Nebraska to represent our state at the national conference that publishes student science research. And even though science does not have any contractual extra pay like business and marketing or robotics sponsors receive, thanks to the many teachers for providing science opportunities to so many OPS students, and in addition, thank you to the principals for finding ways to compensate those teachers for their time outside the duty day. Thank you.
We would entertain any questions, or we could bring the students up and recognize them at this time.
Yes, if you could bring all the students up.
Students, will you please come forward? Thank you. Come on up, guys. Come on over.
Real quick, before we get started, if any of the parents, faculty, or staff that came with the students as well, if you guys could please stand up and be recognized. Thank you so much. So, welcome. So, starting off, so, real quick, if each student, we can just go through the line and just say their name and what it took for them to prepare for this fair.
I'm gonna have them say their names.
Yes.
If you're allowed to, you, I don't believe, and you'll get started anyway.
Yeah, they can go to the mic right there in the middle. Correct. And what school they're from.
My name is Malik Jones, and I'm from Omaha North.
Well, great.
I'm going into 11th grade.
Awesome.
I'm Evelyn, I go to Buffett Magnet, and I am going into the 8th grade.
I'm Sneha Sengupta, and I go to King Science, and I will be going into 9th grade.
I'm Madeline Kane, I just graduated from Central High School and the Zoo Academy.
I'm Christina Gilmore, and I will be a senior at Central High School.
I'm Bria Gilmore, and I'll be a senior at Central High School.
I'm Kevin McGee, and I go to Davis Middle School, and I'm going to the 7th grade.
I'm Imani Butler, and I'm going to the 9th grade.
Thank you. If, just real quick, if just one of you could just explain the amount of work that it takes for you guys to prepare for the Metropolitan Science and Engineering Fair. Anybody?
Hi, I'm Bria again. Well, for us specifically, we had to formulate our research plan, so that takes a good amount of time, and then to put our steps into action really takes them out of time. We had to have our product approved by a board before we continued to proceed with our project, and then we also worked with a lab at UNL. So, tremendous work and focus goes into doing the science fair, and I think it's a great thing that everybody should have the opportunity to have, be a part of.
When did you have to start this project?
We started October, October, November on this particular project, yes.
Okay, thank you. Colleagues, the board, Ms. America?
I would love if each of you could share just kind of a general synopsis of what your projects and research were about.
Hi, I'm Malik, and my project was about marmoset monkeys and enrichment food feeding, so it was just having them go over their, instead of having a regular food dish that they would have in any ordinary zoo or lab research, they had a feeding toy that had hole sizes on them. So, it was either a large hole toy, which was just like the food dish, which they could fit their whole body into, or a small hole toy that they could only fit their arms into. So, it was just to test and increase their foraging like they were in the wild, because in the wild, they have to work for their food, unlike just being given their food.
I'm Evelyn, and I wanted to learn some stuff about static electricity, so I went online, and I found a project where I used a breadboard with an LED and three transmitters, and when the electricity flowed through the right transmitters, the LED would flicker, indicating static electricity, so, yeah, that took a while.
My name is Sneha, and I was generating electricity from mud. I was testing the density of bacteria named Geobacter that could send electricity signals through their skin, and I tested to see how much, if more or less density created more or less electricity.
I had an externship at the aquarium at the Omaha Henry Dorely Zoo, and I worked with crustacean coral and algae lithothanium, and I basically grew it in different light conditions, looking at the ways that it grows, in finding solutions for coral bleaching as a global crisis, and just looking at different ways that that can be improved.
The goal of our project was to look at the difference between biological and perceived stress, so we had our participants do a public speaking exercise, and then during the exercise, we tested their cortisol levels, which is a stress hormone, and then we wanted to see if their survey response could match the cortisol measurements that came back from the lab.
My project was over which one was better, tap water or bottled water, and I found out that tap water was better than, well, bottled water was better than tap water, so yeah.
My project was over how chemicals and heat affected natural hair, so with different type chemicals such as relaxer and heat.
Okay, that is so amazing, all of you. I'm nerding out a little bit, because I, my degree's in biology, and so, I mean, Christina Bria, I'm assuming you guys had to go through IRB approval. That's amazing, that you, in high school, went through an IRB process. That's something I didn't do till my senior year of college. So, I really want to just encourage you all to keep studying science, keep doing research. There are so many opportunities when you go on to colleges and universities to do undergraduate research as well, and the fact that some of you are going to be published is just amazing, like, I am so excited for all of you.
Mr. Smith.
I also wanted to say congratulations, and you guys really represent the district well, but I'm really, really proud of the diversity that you guys took down there, and you do us very, very proud, so congratulations.
Mrs. Gadding.
Well, I'm excited to know that only one of you won't be back next year, so we're thrilled that many of you will be back as OPS students and will get the opportunity to participate again. And then I would just like to say thank you to the parents for supporting, because having been a parent of a Metro Science Fair student, I know it takes a lot of patience, because sometimes you have a science project going on at your house for a long time, and it can be a little painful. So, thank you to the parents also for participating and being willing to encourage your students. So, great job, folks.
Well, thank you guys so much. If you don't mind, if you could come around, and we would love to shake your hand, it would be an honor for the board and to enter part of the circle, and congratulations to you as well.
Vice President America will lead us in the OPS vision and mission statement.
All right, first, our vision, every student, every day, prepared for success, and our mission, Omaha Public Schools prepares all students to excel in college, career, and life.
Roll call, please. Cassidy.
Here.
Gadding.
I'm present, but I don't know my.
Holman.
Here.
America.
Present.
Proman.
Here.
Ryan.
Present.
Scanlon.
Smith.
Here.
Snow.
Here.
Eight present.
Thank you. Mr. Scanlon has informed us that he had a prior work conflict prior to tonight's board meeting, so he will not be joining us tonight. Up next, we have school spotlight with Ms. Monique Farmer.
Good evening, Board President Snow, members of the board, and Superintendent Evans. We are pleased to present this evening our top OPS 2018 Science Fair awardees from the Metro Science and Engineering Fair and the Greater Nebraska Science and Engineering Fair as tonight's OPS Proud Spotlight. In March, nearly 300 of our students, grades 6 through 12, representing 23 public, private, and home school students from Douglas, Washington, Sarpy Counties, competed at the 36th Annual Metropolitan Science and Engineering Fair. OPS was represented by students from nine middle schools, four high schools, and the Zoo Academy. Top projects from 17 categories received plaques, cash prizes of $50, in advance to the Nebraska Junior Academy of Science, held at Nebraska Wesleyan University in April. Seventh grader Hope Lowe from McMillan placed in the top 10 in the state middle school division. 11th graders Christina Gilmore and Bria Gilmore from Central High School placed in the top 10 in the state high school division. Christina and Bria are also invited to present at the American Junior Academy of Sciences this upcoming February in Washington DC, and they will have their research published by the American Association for Advancement of Science. Other OPS students who qualified for and participated at Nebraska Junior Academy of Science were Malik Jones from North High, Imani Butler from King Science Magnet Center, and Evelyn Brown from Buffett. Kevin McGee from Davis Middle School was awarded the Aritia Hosing, sorry, let me re-pronounce that, Aretha Hazing Award for the top sixth grade project, and the Sneha Sengupta Award went to, I'm sorry, was awarded the Dave Dow Award of Excellence. A top project that did not automatically qualify for the Nebraska Junior Academy of Sciences receives this honor. This award is named after and sponsored by the founder of the Metro Science and Engineering Fair. We salute these students for their accomplishments this spring, and I would now like to invite Dr. Chris Shaven, Supervisor of Science, to the podium.
President Snow, Superintendent Evans, and members of the board, thank you for this opportunity to present just a few of the top students in science research here in the Omaha Public Schools. Let me take a quick moment to say thank you to the Board of Education and to the Sherwood Foundation. Ten years ago, we noticed our students would compete but not with inconsistent results in terms of outcomes, and so we set about a competitions grant 10 years ago. Fast forward to today, and Mr. Dan Sitzman, who's here with me, is currently a science coach for Omaha Public Schools, and he continued this work with his own endeavor to support student research and science. So, Daniel Sitzman.
Thank you, Dr. Shaven. Over the past three years, thanks to the K-12 Comprehensive Science Teaching Grant, under the direction of Dr. Shaven, Lead Science Teacher Christina Wildhagen, and elementary supervisors Cindy Brown and Emily Hughes, science instructional coaches have increased the support of teachers and students preparing for science fairs, including at Bryan Middle School, Norris Hale, Lewis and Clark, Rose Hill Elementary, Virtual School, Morton, Burke, and Bryan High, as well as the schools represented here tonight, Davis, King Science, Buffett, Zoo Academy, Central High, and North High. Engaging all students in opportunities to research and to communicate results, whether at competitive science fairs or through non-competitive experiences, aligns with the new Nebraska College and Career Ready Standards for Science. The students tonight represent our district's diversity. In the past five years, OPS students qualifying for the American Junior Academy of Sciences include the first African-American male from Nebraska, the first African-American females from Nebraska, and the first Native American student from Nebraska to represent our state
I just have a simple question, and I wanted to see if I could get some feedback. Oh, Rob Ropel, R-O-B-R-O-P-E-L-L, 908 North 49th Street, Omaha 68132.
Thank you.
I just had one question that I wanted to address, have addressed by the board, to see if I could get some feedback. Considering the recent voter approval of approximately $400 million, combined with the ongoing 2014 roughly $400 million bond program, the Omaha Public School District's footprint is expanding not only in the number of schools, but in many schools' size and their complexity of the systems utilized in their modernization. How is the district to be bolstered from a maintenance perspective if support staff is currently being reduced?
Typically, for public comment, the board does not engage members of the public to turn public comment. So, with your questions that you might have for the board, you can pass those on to Mr. Ray, and we will respond to you in a timely manner.
Okay.
Thank you so much. Also, I encourage you to stick through the entire meeting as we'll be going through this process tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item I, the consent agenda. I will now entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda that is before us.
So moved.
We have a motion by Ms. Ryan, second by Dr. Holman. Any abstentions? Roll call, please.
Snow.
Yes.
Cassie.
Aye.
Gotti.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
America.
Aye.
Pearlman.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Motion carries. Mr. Evans.
Thank you, President Snow. As part of the consent agenda, we did approve tonight three recommendations for new principals. And we have two of our new principals here with us tonight, and I'd like to at least have them stand and be recognized. The new principal for Field Club Elementary will be Dr. Colette Nero. If you could stand and be recognized. And sitting next to Dr. Nero is the new principal at Ponca Elementary, Abby Volcek. We also approved a new principal for Highland Elementary, Carrie Murtough, but she is not here tonight. She teaches a course and was unable to get away. I do want to also thank our school board members that served on those selection committees, as well as the community groups that were part of the selection of our principals, which is, I think, a great tribute to all of you, that you were not only picked by individuals who served on interview panels with you, but also by your community. So, congratulations, and we're glad to have you on board.
Welcome on board. Moving on to item J1A, Budget Reduction Recommendations and Reduction in Force Findings.
We began a process in January of forming a budget advisory committee. And we had representatives from our bargaining units, we had department members, staff, board members were on it. And then we also asked the board to recommend two community members from each of their sub-districts to join us in the budget advisory committee. And from January through April, we conducted budget advisory committee meetings where we would study the district's finances and come up with recommendations for the Board of Education to consider. When the Board of Education met at two budget workshops in May, they were given the budget advisory committee's recommendations, and a vote was taken for what was the consensus of the board on as far as the reductions and how much we would reduce. And then from all of that, administration made recommendations based on the areas developed by the budget advisory committee. And then reductions, all of the reductions that we're making of the $28.8 million has an impact on staff, on families, and on students, because everything we do in the district impacts students. That's why we're here, and that's what we do. If there is something that is listed on these cuts or reductions that we're proposing, remember that we're going to be back doing this again next year. So if there's a favorite item that you have that wasn't cut this time around, we will certainly be back, and that's something we can always consider the following year. This is a pie graph showing the, but recommended cuts. And it's just a summary of all of the cuts, but what we wanted to show is that the majority of the reductions are coming from central office. And that's about $21 million that's coming from central office. I'm just going to go through all of the recommendations that we've made. In the first column, it has BAC, that's a budget advisory committee recommendation. Then we had the board average of what you had voted for as far as the dollar amount and what you wanted to see reduced. And then administration came in, and we reviewed the recommendations, and then made recommendations to the board as well. So, there's a running total down at the bottom, and the budget advisory committee recommended a $10 million reduction to central office. Board average was a $12.4 million, and then the administrative recommendation was $12.6 million. Overall, there's 59 FTEs in central office of the 309 that are funded with general fund that is being reduced. So that's a 19% reduction in staff at central office. And they included areas of accounting, budgeting, administrative support, human resources, operations, and then the full and part-time bus time drivers. There was also a reduction in discretionary spending. So, the total reduction at central office is $12.6. There was a recommendation to eliminate the cellphone stipends. And after consideration, the administration recommended a $200,000 reduction in cellphone stipends. They're eliminating the executive council cellphone stipend, and then reducing the remaining staff to $50 per month for the cellphone stipends. So that running total is now $12.8 million. There was a recommendation to reduce or eliminate travel. And this is travel for central office. So we reduced the central office travel by $200,000, making the running total $13 million. There was a recommendation to eliminate elementary magnets, and we came back and recommended to eliminate the discretionary funding and to leave the FTEs in place for 1819. But we did recommend further study of the magnet programs district-wide. There was a recommendation to reduce or eliminate elementary assistant principals. And after further review, we determined that we should be making an adjustment to the principal staffing to provide support in high-need schools. So in lieu of the reduction of the elementary assistant principals, the district will revise the staff formula to include both free and reduced lunch and ELL rates, providing assistant principals based on needs, not just enrollment. There was another recommendation to reduce secondary assistant principals. That was not on the list for the budget advisory committee or the board, but there were two vacant secondary assistant principal positions that will be eliminated, and that's just to align with the district staffing formula. There was a recommendation to reduce the supply material and equipment budgets at buildings. We, when we prepared the budgets for the buildings, we give each building $100 per student for discretionary funding. And in this proposal, we would reduce the secondary per-student allocation to $90 per student, and the elementary per-student allocation to $95 per student. And that savings would be $620,000. There is a provision to reduce or eliminate overtime. The budget advisory committee recommended $1 million, and the administration recommends that as well. That would be achieved through increasing efficiencies and how overtime is tracked and managed, as a result of our people soft upgrade and the use of time clocks. Overtime management would be moved to the direct supervisor of each employee. There is a provision to eliminate the adoption of a textbook for ELA textbook adoption for one year, just to postpone it for one year. That's a $7 million purchase that we're putting out for one year to allow for further research and study of the material selection, the implementation, and professional development. In the interim, the CIS will provide teachers with strategies to increase the rigor using materials already provided through the use of open education resources. There is a recommendation to reduce and reassign school support liaisons. And that would be a $2.1 million reduction. And there will be 18 remaining school support liaisons, and that's to provide support to multiple schools. And that would be elimination of those positions, but they would be reassigned to other positions within the district. The next one is to reassign 50 FTE to certified staff in buildings not already assigned to classrooms. And the administration is recommending not to do this at this time, and table it until next year when a more strategic approach could be used for the use of certified staff in buildings, not assigned to classrooms. Then there's a 5% reduction in non-transportation contracted services. This is in addition to the $12.6 million already proposed for a reduction to central office. This is coming from the accounting and finance contracted services. Then we're also recommending to centralize summer school and to study this further for the next year. We're hoping to gain efficiencies through centralized locations and transportation efficiencies. Freeze pay was another item that was discussed and recommended. And all of the bargaining units and the non-negotiated staff, with the exception of OEA, would have their salaries frozen for 2018-19. The reason OEA is not frozen is because they've already entered into an agreement for the 1819 school year. And then we have 100 vacant parapositions out of the total of 1,356 parapositions that we have district-wide. So we're recommending eliminating those positions and reassigning staff based on the needs of the buildings. So we do have areas of, I wanted to bring up, the total recommendation from administration is $29,535,000 in reductions for 1819. Areas for future study, as I said earlier, you have an opportunity to come back next year and have some further reductions. One is to review the extended day-year programs that we have in the district, to look at some transportation efficiencies, revisit cellphone stipends to make sure that we're addressing that appropriately, outsource secondary success program, shut down central office for a week, non-classified certificate, non-classroom certificated staff reductions, magnet programs at all levels, review the pension plan path forward, and then summer schools. So these are all recommended areas of study that we will be bringing back to the board as we compile information for you to review. So our next steps is board action this evening on recommended cuts, so we can begin the process of realigning staff and developing our budgets as we move forward. In June, June through August, we're going to be doing staffing adjustments and realignments and developing the budget. Plan to have another budget workshop, where we'll bring back what's actually happening with the budget. This is giving us parameters as we develop the budget, and then we'll bring back our recommended budget during a workshop for your review and input as we go forward. On August 20th, we'll get the assessed property values from the county. That'll give us a better idea of what our tax collections will be. And then we're going to publish the budget hearing on August 29th and have the budget hearing on September 5th. And then the budget is due to be filed with the state and the county and the Department of Education by September 20th.
In addition, just would like to share a couple of comments. One, just a thank you to all the community members, staff members, school board members that have spent nearly six months since we first started looking at this and trying to be thoughtful about an analysis. It's something that no one likes doing. There's not a person in this room, there's not a person at this table that is happy to be a part of any reduction process. No one likes doing that. But we were in a situation where we had a 19, approximately $19.5 million OSERS payment on top of the matching payment that was due. And then we also had some state reductions. So out of that $29 million, 19, over $19 million goes right into OSERS for this year. And I do have to say, and this is the part that Ms. Kanoki was mentioning at the first of it, you are going to have some of this conversation next year as well, because the OSERS ARC is going to be 21.3? Okay, that's better. I was going to say 21.6, 21.3 million next year. So that payment is going up, and until our investment returns get higher, where that ARC starts to move down, and it's going to take a little while for that to happen, or until we get legislative support. We had attempted some things this year, as the school board knows, to increase with a pension obligation bond, to infuse some resources into that. But unfortunately, legislatively, it didn't pass. But that's part of our long-term challenge, is how do we find a way to react to that OSERS ARC that right now went from 19 to 21.3 next year? And then the next year, there's another bump as well. So, the challenge is, I don't think it will be as bad next year. I think it will not be 29 million. My hope is that our enrollment growth will help us. My hope is that assessed valuation, which we won't know about till August, I'm hoping that that growth is higher than what we projected in our early projections in the budget. And my hope is that the end-of-year cash balance, which we'll know about at the end of August, will also be
board action this evening on recommended cuts, so we can begin the process of realigning staff and developing our budgets as we move forward. In June and June through August, we're going to be doing staffing adjustments and realignments and developing the budget. Plan to have another budget workshop. We'll bring back what's actually happening with the budget. This is giving us parameters as we develop the budget. And then we'll bring back our recommended recommended budget during a workshop for your review and input as we go forward. On August twentieth, we'll get the assessed property values from the county. That'll give us a better idea of what our tax collections will be. And then we're going to publish the budget hearing on August twenty ninth and have the budget hearing on September fifth. And then the budget is due to be filed with the state and the county and the Department of Education by September twentieth.
In addition, just would like to share a couple of comments. One, just a thank you to all the community members, staff members, school board members that have spent nearly six months since we first started looking at this and trying to be thoughtful about an analysis. It's something that no one likes doing. There's not a person in this room, there's not a person at this table that is happy to be a part of any reduction process. No one likes doing that. But we were in a situation where we had a nineteen, approximately nineteen point five million dollar OSERS payment on top of the matching payment that was due. And then we also had some state reduction, so out of that twenty-nine million, nineteen, over nineteen million goes right into OSERS for this year. And I do have to say, and this is the part that Ms. Kanoki was mentioning at the first of it, you you are going to have some of this conversation next year as well because the OSERS ARC is going to be twenty-one point three? Okay, that's better. I was going to say twenty-one point six, twenty-one point three million next year. So that that payment is going up. And until our investment returns get higher, where that arc starts to move down, and it's going to take a little while for that to happen, or until we get legislative support. We had attempted some things this year as the as the school board knows knows to increase with a pension obligation bond, to infuse some some resources into that. But unfortunately legislatively, it didn't pass. But that's part of our long-term challenge is how do we find a way to react to that OSERS ARC that right now went from nineteen to twenty-one point three next year? And then the next year, there's another bump as well. So so the challenge is, I don't think it will be as bad next year. I think it will not be nine, twenty-nine million. My hope is that our enrollment growth will help us. My hope is that assessed valuation, which we won't know about till August, I'm hoping that that growth is higher than what we projected in our early projections in the budget. And my hope is that the end of year cash balance, which we'll know about at the end of August, will also be supportive so that the number's not quite as big as what we've seen this year. But but again, no one wants to be here and clearly I understand the impact, and I think the school board does too, on individuals' lives. And we've all had calls, we've all been in meetings, we've all had that opportunity to see the impact that reductions have. So I think everyone's taking it very seriously. And I just want want to thank them for that that thoughtful analysis that you've all been a part of.
Making sure we're going to continue, I I heard we may want to have some discussion at this point.
Correct. So I would open up for any discussion on the first item, the approval of the district recommended budget reductions for the two thousand eighteen nineteen fiscal year. Mrs. Gotti.
I might just make the comment that there were two workshops on this prior to that, so if constituents wonder what any of us were saying at that time, instead of reiterating some of those things tonight, I'm just going to refer folks back to the podcast for those two. There was certainly a lot of discussion and we took it very seriously. So I just want to make sure that for all of us, this is not the first time we've seen it. And it would be good if you wanted more detail to listen to those podcasts.
Mr. Pearlman.
Thank you. My first question is, so we're using more than twenty million in cash reserves this year and proposing cuts of more than twenty-eight million. So we're approaching fifty million dollars for the next school year. And some of the cuts are permanent reductions, which would lead to permanently spending less. But at this point, what's our best estimate? I know there's always fluctuations, but assuming no significant changes politically or any other things, what's the projected shortfall heading into twenty nineteen, twenty twenty?
At a minimum, it would be recouping what we're taking from the fund balance. So that twenty-six point five million dollars or twenty-six point six million that we're taking from the fund balance, we're going to have to put some money back in. So that would be something that we'd probably have to look at. And then the difference between what we had to pay for the ARC this year and what we're going to projected to have to pay next year is about three million dollars more. So I'm thinking twenty-six million is is probably a good estimate of what we may have to come up with for reductions for next year.
And there's two unknowns that you'll know in just two months. You'll know the assessed valuation. That's in the second week of August, I believe. And right now, we projected a three percent growth. And last year, I believe it was five percent. So we've projected conservatively. So her numbers that she just mentioned was based on a three percent growth. I would also say that I believe it's likely to be over three percent. I don't know for sure. Could it be five percent like it was this last year? Six percent? I know homes are selling pretty fast in Omaha area. I've heard that from several people. So I know I know there's some potential for that. I also think the end of year cash balance number is a real critical number for the school board to look at when we close out the books at the end of August. So you have two really big points in time that I think the board looking at in the next couple of months will be helpful on what that number is for next year.
And did you say that there was twenty-six point five million from unrestricted funds being used?
I believe that's what it is. I'm not, I've had it in previous presentations. I don't know right off the top of my head.
And that was always a number that I had been working off of, but in the reduction in force resolution, it's twenty-one point six. So if we could get that clarified before we vote on that. And what I guess if we, if the board is in favor of the resolution, I guess I'm looking for clarity on what exactly that means. I know there's some legal effect of having to to declare that a reduction in force is necessary. But beyond that, is it a board endorsement of the proposed cuts? Or are we still working through board suggestions or? I guess I don't know where we're at there.
Are you talking about in the RIF notice or are you talking about in the reductions?
Both.
So the first piece on here is, Mr. Kramer, you can go ahead and start making your way up. So the first piece on here is the approval, the district is requesting our approval of the district recommended budget reductions, which is that twenty-nine million, five hundred and thirty-five thousand. And then the reduction in force findings is more of the legal piece, which is the second part. If you guys look at your agenda, that's the Board of Education fines. And that talks about the actual twenty-one support liaisons, certified staff, which comes out to that twenty-eight point eight million shortfall. Does that answer your question? So they're two separate. One is, the first vote that we're making is approving the recommendations from the district to allow them to let staff know. Because we do have staff still in limbo, trying to figure out are they going to still be employed with the district or should they be looking for something else? And then the second part is more the legal piece that we have to do.
I mean, what you're saying, I understand, but I'm just looking at action item J one A. Looks like just one item.
It's the way it's, we decided to move the reduction in force and the budget reduction recommendations into one, so we don't have two different items. It would be two votes coming out of J one A. So the first vote will be a motion to approve the district recommended budget reductions for the two thousand eighteen nineteen fiscal year. And then after that, we'll have a vote for the reduction force findings.
Okay. So is it too late to make any adjustments to these recommendations?
For the, for the district recommendations?
Well, I guess they're just district recommendations. So I, I, I guess I'm unsure of what we're doing. Or is this a vote to support the district's recommendations?
This is a vote to support the district recommendations that were presented today and presented on Thursday last week. The twenty-nine million, five hundred and thirty-five thousand.
Okay.
And if you, yes, and if you do would like to make recommendations for something, you can make a motion for something like that. You need a second, and then we will vote on that recommendation to be added to the overall district recommendations.
Okay. My next question is about travel for central office. Previously, it was my understanding that the recommended two hundred thousand dollar reduction for travel was general fund district wide. Tonight was the first time I heard that it was for central office.
We do budget for schools and program travel. So there are two pots of money that make up that total travel budget. So we were just looking at the reduction for central office because we didn't wanted to stay as far away from the classroom as we could.
Okay. And so we saw figures for the current school year's travel spending, which was approximately four hundred thousand. Is that accurate?
To date, yeah.
Do we know what it's projected to be by the end of the fiscal year?
I believe the budget is like five hundred and ninety-two thousand or something. So the budget year, I think we showed you the the financials through April. So the budget year is about sixty percent complete, so we should probably come close to what the budget was.
Okay. And for two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, the approximate figure was about eight hundred and eighty-eight thousand. Was that for central office general fund or was that for?
Every, that was everything.
That was everything?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's like mileage that we pay for, you know, traveling between buildings and and all of that that we pay to staff.
Okay. Just a couple more questions. On the cellphone stipend, it's actually, hasn't even been around five years. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And when it started, it was only seventy-five dollars and for just a handful of employees?
Yes, but we do provide cell phones for emergency staff and building operations receives cell phones that they use for their work orders and and to be on call.
Okay. And so then an increase from a seventy-five dollar per month stipend to a hundred and twenty-five dollar per month stipend, is that right?
Yes.
So now we're recommending to reduce it?
Down to fifty dollars per month and to study it further.
Okay. On the revenue side of things, I know there's been some things that have been proposed in the state legislature to try to minimize the the downturn in the pension, like the three hundred million dollar pension obligation bond. But is there, or can the board direct any, I mean, how does this work as far as exploring a levy override, which has been done in three other districts, I believe, in the metro area this year to to offset some of the cuts that we're going to see in twenty nineteen? I mean, how does that actually work?
So, Mr. Pearlman, the way that would work is at, towards the end of the summer, the legislative committee will be working with our lobbyists as well as with district leadership on potential recommendations to float in front of the board, whether it is a levy override, whether it is legislation in Lincoln to try to remedy the situation that we have moving forward in two thousand nineteen, twenty school year. And I do believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. America, you guys had a chart list of things you guys were going to go through to potential opportunities on the revenue side or to help us in the current situation that we're in. Yes.
Yes, that was meant to be part of my committee report. But I I wouldn't say they were all revenue-based ideas. Some of them may be revenue-based, but other ones based on funding formulas, calculations, et cetera, that would change or make a difference in the situation.
Thank you.
I just wanted to make a correction for you, Mr. Pearlman. The the reduction from the the fund balance is twenty-one point six million dollars. That is correct. I apologize. I was incorrect there.
Okay. Are there any other discussions or work being done to? Or what else is being done that we can talk about other than the three hundred million dollar pension obligation bond to try to work on the the pension shortfall that's still growing at, I think, four million dollars a month?
Well, we will certainly be looking at legislation to try to address some of the issues that we have. You know, we'd meet as a committee, the legislative committee, to look at options for what we're doing to move forward.
Okay. And and just as a reminder, when the new schools open, when we have, we have five new schools, I believe, six, when we count the one, the elementary school across the street, and the annual cost to staff and operate those will be somewhere in the order of thirty-five, forty-five million a year. Is that right?
That's correct.
And we'll get two years of state aid, additional state aid for that.
For, we'll also get it for student growth, if we have student growth. And then there's overcrowding in some of our buildings, so there would be a shift in the staff would follow the students to the new buildings as well.
Just just one point of reference, the the pension obligation, the ARC payment is growing at approximately three million a year, not a month, about three point
We pay out four million a month.
But it's not the obligation.
Right.
The ARC payment is not growing, because that would be forty-eight million a year in ARC payment growth. And so I think that would be inaccurate. If somebody watching might think that's what's happening.
Yes, we
The ARC payment growth is projected at approximately three point one million, I believe.
Right. What I was referring to is we pay out four million a month more than we bring in on pension benefits. Is that accurate? I recalled you saying that.
We draw down from our fund balance, yeah, every
Every month.
Every month to make the payroll, yeah.
It's four million more than what's paid in by employees. And then part of that four million is made up for on investment returns. And that's been our challenge is if the investment returns were higher, then we wouldn't have the nineteen point eight this year. That's going to become twenty-one point three in the future years. And then twenty-four is getting investment returns. We lowered the assumption rate from eight percent to seven and a half percent this year because we weren't meeting that higher investment rate. So it's correct on the four million, but there's other pieces to that puzzle too with investment returns having a huge implication, of which, by the way, the last year was a good year. We had our highest, one of our highest in several years. It was ten percent. So we were above the seven and a half percent assumption rate, but it's not enough for one year. That growth isn't enough to overcome the ARC payment, which is the bummer of it. It kind of takes you a while to get out of it if you don't do something else on top of just making higher ARC payments to make up for investment returns.
Okay. Well, I don't have any other questions, and I don't know if now's the right time or later, but I would make a motion to fully eliminate the cellphone stipends. And I could wait for discussion to see if anyone wants to second. We did unanimously agree to make that complete reduction.
So you can make that recommendation, that motion. But we're going to have Charles present the district board of reg, the reduction in force findings, and then we'll vote on these two items. So separately. So then you can make that motion after we have a quick discussion. Yes, ma'am. Mrs. Gotti.
So I just want to, and I don't know if this is the right time before, I wanted to kind of respond to a couple of things that have just been said on this conversation. Is this
Oh, yes, you can. This is the right time.
So I just want to point out, and I'm sorry, Charles, you are like up and down. I apologize. A couple of things, just to make sure that we're really clear from a public perspective and from the board's perspective. The nineteen million dollar payment has to be paid this fiscal year, not next fiscal year. The twenty-one million dollar ARC payment will be paid next fiscal year. So even though we keep saying nineteen, it's really, we're really working toward that twenty-one million dollar point. But there's a couple of other things. And having been through this a few times, what we know is that when we get to August thirty-first, sometimes the reserve is way different than what we think it is, because sometimes people have not spent what they thought they were going to. And I think last year, you ended up with
I think it was about thirteen million?
Thirteen million more than what we had anticipated. So even though that's, it's a big number, but it's a small number compared to the total budget. So I just want to make sure everybody understands that that really is a fluctuating number. And so even though we say twenty-one million, it may not have to be twenty-one million. That's what I'm hoping for. I do think that for next year, whatever we dip into the reserve, plus what we've delayed in curriculum, plus whatever the additional ARC is, and that those ARC payments, right now, the only one we know for sure is the nineteen million that's in September. What we don't know is what next year's is. We have these beautiful projections that say this is what we think it's going to be. But the fact of the matter is, the market's been pretty flat since January first. And so what we don't know is did the gain we had from September through December, will that help to offset? And will summer look better from a return standpoint than what we, what we think? So what we don't know is that unknown in what's going to happen to that ARC payment for next year, is it going to be the twenty-one million something, or is it going to be something more or less than that? The curriculum component, and then that other unknown that we don't know of what really will be the number that we have to dip into the reserve. So sometimes we make these numbers sound really hard, but they're not, we don't know them until we run the end of the year numbers. And I just want to make sure that we're all clear on that, that it could be better or it could be, you know, hopefully not a lot worse. But it it could certainly be better because we know that everyone's been trying to control spending. And so hopefully that number that Connie's projecting will come in better than we thought.
And one thing, as some of you were on the budget advisory committee, you remember that those numbers were kind of changing as we moved along. And that's what happens with projections. You revise them all the time depending on what revenues you have coming in, what expenditures you have going out. And so it is sort of a moving target until we get to the point where you adopt the budget in September. So we're we're trying to give you the best picture that we have right now. It'll become clearer as we finish up the year. Our fiscal year ends August thirty-first. And when we know what our actual expenditures will be, what our revenues are, then we'll we'll know, you know, as far as the budget adoption, what it's going to be looking like going forward.
Mr. Pearlman.
So that actually, those are some some good reminders there. And it brings up a question I have. What, you know, is seven point five, is the assumed rate of return? Is that now what it is?
Yes, for the retirement. Yes, for the retirement, it's seven and a half percent, yes. It used to be eight percent, and that generated a lot of our unfunded liability.
And have we done the projections of what the ARC would be, should we only have a return of, say, seven percent, six point five, and so forth?
I believe the actuary did some studies, but in statute, it's the seven and a half percent rate of return, and we do have a projection for the next five years of what the ARC payments will be, and at 2019, it's the twenty-one point three, and then it goes to twenty-three point five, and then it goes to twenty-five, so it just keeps going up, but that is contingent on what the market actually does, and if it's a good return or a bad one, so.
Right. And do you know the numbers for every, say, one percentage less than seven point five, what that would lead to? Ms. Gotti?
You, so I don't know what the projection of the ARC payment is, but in the actuary report, they actually give you a range on each side for the unfunded liability, so you can kind of back into that number a bit.
Okay.
And I can't remember what page it's on, but it's something that has to be included.
Okay.
It's either in the actuary report or the audit reports. I think it's the audit. Actuary? Okay. We'll look for it.
But those numbers-
Have Matt send it out.
They increase pretty dramatically, right? For every percentage under here?
It significantly, well, we know that the eight percent change to the seven and a half percent resulted in, what, a hundred million?
Thirty.
Hundred and thirty million.
Hundred and thirty million?
Of unfunded liability, when the assumption changed, and so you just think about that over thirty years, is really what you're doing, I mean, you can't divide it evenly, but that's kind of what you're looking at.
Okay. And for a levy override, every cent brings in two million per year, is that right?
Yes, that's, what we estimate that to bring in is a penny would generate about two million dollars.
Okay, thanks.
Finally, Mr. Wakefield.
I'm gonna take a pause, just to make sure.
Ten-second pause.
Okay. Really, two reasons why we're here tonight, one is the budget reductions and getting that approval, this has a direct impact on staff, and due to the budget reductions, we are, we're talking about an impact on staff, and I think it has been mentioned multiple times tonight that we have staff waiting kind of on this answer. So bringing forth the reduction in force process for tonight, the twenty-eight point eight million projected budget shortfall that we have been talking about, and Ms. Kanoki took us through, the district believes that constitutes a significant change in circumstances for next school year. So assuming that you agree that this change in circumstances has occurred, we would recommend the board consider a reduction in force. When we looked at a reduction in force, I did wanna highlight how human resources and the district in general approached a reduction in force. We had several guiding principles, because we recognize the impact this has on people, and at this point, they're, they're people, they're not employees, and dealing with our, our staff in a way that is humane, dignified, and professional at all times. We, we focus first and foremost on students, we recognize what we do for a living and how important that is, and so any reduction we did had to be as far away from students as possible. We recognized that we had to treat our employees with professionalism and dignity, we recognized that we had to have a clear and consistent process as we approached this, that we had to have great communication throughout, that we had to provide resources and help employees and supervisors manage that transition. And finally, we wanted to work as much as possible to work through attrition. The numbers you will see before you today have changed dozens of times in the past month, as we've gone through attrition and changes, trying to impact as few people as possible as we move forward. In order to do a certified reduction, we started first with your own board policy, policy forty-one sixty, which guides certified reduction in force. We started by reviewing this policy, and then looking at vacancies, seniority in the district, endorsements, and needs of departments, as we looked at that, to identify who potentially could or would be reduced, or what positions potentially could be reduced. While we're talking primarily about certified staff today, I want you to recognize classified staff underwent the same process, we treated the process very similarly between the two. So, we are recommending, based on the budget reduction that you saw earlier, that the district reduce one central office certified staff member as a part of that twelve point six central office reduction. That central office certified staff member will not lose their position, we are amending their contract, they will be assigned to a building-based position for next year. We are also recommending the reduction of twenty-one school support liaisons, saving approximately two point one million dollars. Again, this is based, as Ms. Kanoki spoke, on realigning support across the district, we tied this very much to the assistant principal and non-classroom support, as we looked at how to best support schools. This would impact seventeen current SSLs, as we have four vacancies as of today. Vacancies are either resignations or promotions into other positions in our district. Again, none of these SSLs would lose their position in the district, this is a contract amendment, all of them will be reassigned positions in buildings, assuming you approve today, they would be reassigned tomorrow, and be notified of what that position was. So what we are asking you to do today is to adopt a resolution based on the proposed reduction in force finding, that due to the anticipated twenty-eight point eight million-dollar budget shortfall for the eighteen-nineteen school year, that that constitutes a change in circumstances from this school year, necessitating a reduction in force. And in order to comply with district staffing formula, district staffing realignment plans, the elimination of twenty-one student support liaison positions, and one central office certified staff positions are specifically related to the change in circumstances resulting in the anticipated twenty-eight point eight million-dollar budget shortfall for the eighteen-nineteen school year.
Thank you. I will now open it up for any discussion from my colleagues. Mr. Pearlman.
For a resolution of this nature, is it a legal requirement to have such specificity as to what jobs are gonna be eliminated?
I'm gonna defer to legal counsel. Sorry.
Shortest answer you'll ever get from me, yes.
Okay. So that brings up my second question, fortunately. If we so choose to fully eliminate cellphone stipends, that would mean there would be a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars to allocate towards student support liaisons, is that an accurate statement?
The difference between the district's recommendation of two hundred thousand and the cost of three fifty-five, if I remember correctly, Ms. Kanoki, that would allow a hundred and fifty-five thousand to be allocated to something, whatever the board chose.
Correction, district.
District, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'd be responsible for coming up with another hundred and fifty-five thousand reductions.
Okay. I guess ultimately, that, I mean, for me, I can't speak for anyone else, but that puts me in a position of saying that the cellphone stipends are more of necessity than student support liaisons, as it relates to this resolution, and I, I guess I don't know how to answer that question, but if there's a hundred and fifty-five thousand, I mean, if we're being told that that is necessary, okay, but if it's not, then it begs the question of whether or not it's necessary to riff twenty-one student support liaisons, and I guess that's just kind of a rhetorical question.
Any other comments or questions from colleagues on the board? Thank you, Charles. All right. Ms. America.
I, I don't want to rehash everything we just said on Thursday, I think we had a very full discussion on Thursday about how the district planned to reallocate, reuse these positions, put them where they were most needed, work with the assistant principals, that originally we were talking about getting rid of all, or a significant number of elementary assistant principals and student support liaisons, and now we're saying, no, we're going to relook at how we support our schools, we're going to reallocate the assistant principal positions, and then based on that reallocation, essentially reallocate the remaining student support liaison positions, so that we are supporting our schools that need it the most. We also heard why the administration feels that we should do some type of cellphone stipend this year, for our positions that we feel are twenty-four-seven positions, that we expect them to answer their phone no matter what, any time of day, and that is something we can come back to, too, next year, when we're looking at budget recommendations, if we decide that there's a cutoff point of up to this pay level gets a cellphone stipend, above that, no, you're responsible for your own, or this specific position comes with a cellphone stipend outside of those specific positions, it doesn't. I think that's something we can definitely come back to next year, but I think the, if, if people want to hear the full, full-out explanations, I don't wanna think, I don't want people to think we're not taking this seriously, so I would just echo what Mrs. Gotti said earlier of going back, looking at those podcasts, because we had some very thorough discussion on Thursday.
Correct. Well, just briefly, I, I only learned today that the cellphone stipend hasn't even been here for five years, and I don't know if people were not expected, or if there was entirely new categories of job descriptions over the last five years, or what was going on before two thousand and thirteen, but I, you know, when this cellphone stipend started, it was seventy-five dollars for a handful of employees, and it ballooned to a hundred and twenty-five dollars per month for a whole lot more employees, and, and so, I mean, it's, it is what it is.
As members of the board, it's our job to listen to the experts of the district, that is our current superintendent, incoming superintendent, and cabinet-level positions, and if that committee comes together and says that they are the experts, we, as a board, must take their advice on that, because they're in the schools every day, they understand the threat assessment of our district, and it's our job to support them in these recommendations. So, Ms. America, if you could-
Well, if I could respond real quickly, it's, it's that type of, that type of working relationship that, that put us in this pension problem to begin with, and so there's nothing wrong with, with, you know, asking the questions about how money's allocated.
I'm not disagreeing with you on that, Mr. Pearlman. Mrs. Cassidy.
So, I think when you think about your own budgets in your homes, and you're having budget issues, we've all been there, hopefully not everyone, but a lot of us have been, you think about things right off the top, like you're getting rid of your cable, you're cutting down on your groceries, you're getting rid of a cellphone, or maybe reducing your plan, but I think we need to be logical here, and I think that, as Ms. America said, we've hashed this out quite a bit, I do not disagree with what you're saying, though, Mr. Pearlman, but I wanna make sure that everyone knows that this is something that's going to be studied. I know when I looked at the list of different personnel in the district that do get their cellphones paid, and I am glad to see that that's been reduced from, what was it, a hundred and twenty-five, down to fifty dollars, we're in a budget crunch, we need that to be that drastic of a cut. But I think that we do need to look at the list of personnel, there were people on that list that, quite frankly, I don't understand why they may be getting a cell phone, a cell stipend for a cellphone, I'm glad that that's gonna be studied further, but I think in this day and age, you just can't ask the district of our size to not, you can't ask our personnel to not be compensated in some form for a cellphone, because of the given things that may come up. I mean, we're in a world now where a cellphone is critical, I mean, any, think of any person in this room, you think of your cellphone gone for even a day, and you're having a tough day, and now you put in, a tornado happens, a building has an unfortunate incident, like a shooting, which is very, something that could very much happen, we cannot ask our critical employees to not be compensated for cellphones, does it have to be a hundred and twenty-five dollars? Heck, no. But fifty is reasonable, at least for now, in my eyes. I do, I am very glad that that list will be looked at, I think it's something that needs to be, but I don't think we can yank it away completely from our critical personnel, I think it's needed, and it's, it's warranted.
Thank you. Ms. America.
I move board approval of the district recommended budget reductions for the twenty-eighteen-nineteen fiscal year.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. America, and we have a second by Ms. Ryan. Of Dr. Holman, my apologies. Any discussion?
Is it too late to make the amended motion?
No, this is when you make your-
I move to entirely eliminate the cellphone stipends.
We have a motion by Mr. Pearlman to eliminate the cellphone stipends, that is in the current recommendation from the district. Is there a second? Hearing done, motion fails. Back to the discussion of the approval of the district recommendation, recommended budget reductions for two thousand eighteen-nineteen fiscal year. Hearing done, roll call, please. Cassidy.
Aye.
Gotti.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
America.
Aye.
Pearlman.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Eightye. Motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education finds, based on the evidence presented in the attached resolution, that a reduction in force is necessary, because, one, the anticipated twenty-eight point eight million-dollar budget shortfall for the twenty-eighteen-twenty-nineteen school year constitutes a change in circumstances from the twenty-seventeen-twenty-eighteen school year, necessitating a reduction in force, and, two, in order to comply with the district staffing formula and the district staffing realignment plans, the elimination of twenty-one student support liaison positions, and one central office certified staff position are specifically related to the change in circumstances resulting from the anticipated twenty-eight point eight million-dollar budget shortfall for the twenty-eighteen-twenty-nineteen school year.
I have a motion by Ms. America.
Second.
Second by Mr. Smith. Discussion? Roll call. Gotti.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
America.
Aye.
Pearlman.
No.
Ryan.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Seven aye, one no. Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to J two A, committees of the board update. We'll start with budget and audit.
Okay, on budget and audit, we really spent our committee time when we met, talking about what we would do as far as presentation for the workshops, and working through some of those issues, so I think we spent a lot of time on budget, and I guess I can just jump real quick to the student assignment plan, too, if that's okay, unless somebody has a question on budget, I think we've all gotten the opportunity to talk a lot about it. On the student assignment plan, we met both May fifth and May third, and on May, or May second, and on May second, we talked quite a bit about how we're reimbursed from the state on transportation, and just some of those reimbursements, and what our actual expenditures are, and how all that comes out, we also talked about the school selection process with the new student assignment plan completely in place for a year, seeing how students selected schools, and pretty, I don't think we saw any surprises there. And then on the May thirtieth meeting, we talked quite a bit about the fact that we would be opening new elementary, and new, and one new middle, and a couple new high schools, so we really focused more on the elementary-middle school component, timing, trying to understand better what the structure of our buildings will look like, do we want everything to be K five, six, eight, how timing would impact that, and just, I think what we came to was dealing with the elementary and the middle, there's a lot of information out there, there's gonna have to be a lot of meetings, staff will need to meet quite a bit, and we'll be there as a board, just to kind of bounce things off of from our constituent standpoint, but we obviously didn't come up with any solutions, we did talk a lot about the need to probably start looking at boundaries from an elementary side first, and, and how that would impact middle schools, whether we would have pathways to middle schools from the elementary schools, so lots of conversation yet to be had, but that covers those two committees, so I don't know if anybody has any questions.
Is transportation involved in those conversations while you guys are reading? Is transportation involved in those conversations while you guys are reading?
They are. They are, and we're, we talked about whether or not, once we get boundaries redone, whether or not there will need to be any adjustment of the transportation plan, but that'll be down the road. But they have been included.
Thank you. Moving on to policy.
We'll see in J-2C, the recommended policy changes, there's three of them, one of them involving contracts. Just wanted to ensure that all the proper i's are dotted, t's are crossed, and, and all of the contracts that we have. Non-service animals, that's another policy, five, four, two, three, these are for anyone listening, watching, these are all on the, on the agenda tonight as PDFs, and also field trips. There's a policy six-two-seven-zero, addresses field trips taken by staff, teachers, and students.
Onto an Americanism committee?
The Americanism Committee met on the thirtieth of May, and we discussed the NICE program, which is the Native Indigenous Centered Education Program. And the program director, Echo Hawk Left Hand, came and presented to us, and it was, I thought, a very, very interesting conversation. And they currently serve about a thousand students of Native Indigenous descent, and they just have a lot of really cool programs going on. And they've started a Native Voices Council, which is similar to our Student Voices Council, which I am excited to see get off the ground, and hopefully hear from the students, and how this program is impacting them soon, so.
Thank you. Legislative?
Okay. Right now, we're kind of in the slow season, because the legislative session is done. Interim study hearings haven't started yet. So as I mentioned earlier, we did, at one of our last meetings, kind of start an initial idea of some ideas for the next legislative session. I think we focused mainly on things related to osers and funding, but this is the time that if there is something, you have an idea on legislative-wise, for any statute related to board, related to school districts, if you want to send that to Mr. Ray or any members of the legislative committee, so that we can start, start researching and working on that. The state NASB legislative committee will have their meeting in July, and then for our committee members, just watch your emails, for an email from Mr. Ray, so that we can get a meeting set up over the summer.
If you have any comments or questions or anything, you can contact the chairs of the committee. Our CBOC rep is not here tonight, so we'll just go ahead and move on to J-2B. Phase one, bond program update. And it has listed on the document, speakers is Dr. Turnquist, but obviously, you're not Dr. Turnquist. Mark Summers?
Correct.
Yes, indeed.
This evening, we have an update on the bond program, phase one. Initially, the intent was to also have a CBOC representative, but they ran into an issue this evening and had a conflict and could not attend. The agenda for this evening is, is an overview of the program, a, a little bit of a dive into the program financials, some updated information on vendor participation in the inclusion program, some program and project coordination details that normally don't get a significant chance to kind of share with the board. And then I have a few slides of some recent project updates. The first slide here, of course, the program's on time and on budget, and I just wanted to, to pause briefly on that, because I know I've been here many times, and I've said it's on time and on budget, and that sounds easy to say, and it just kind of happens. Well, it, it just doesn't happen. Throughout the program, we've been very fortunate to work with, you know, great district leadership, a lot of great schools and campuses, you know, coupled with, with our team in the, in the project management strategy and the sequencing of projects, have really resulted in a, in a very successful program in a saturated marketplace. There are other clients that are currently struggling with significant budget problems in their projects, and we've been just very fortunate along the way to have a good plan and stick to that plan, to make sure that wasn't a circumstances the district would ultimately have to deal with. I did a little bit of, of kind of looking back, and, and back in August of 2015, there was a lot of, you know, tension or, or potential risk about how successful is the program going to be as the district transitions into spending four-hundred million dollars in an already fairly busy marketplace. Data center work was, was kind of booming, a large cancer center project was under construction, so a lot of folks doing a lot of things. And I was happy then to say, you know, we have a plan, and, and we feel like it's going to work well for the district, and, and it has worked very well. So, again, I just don't want the kind of on-budget, on, on-time discussion to kind of pass by. It's a huge, huge milestone for the district. All but one project has been bid, and in the scheme of the entire bond program, it's about a million and a half to two-million-dollar project. So for all kind of global discussions, a lot of the risk has passed from a bidding of the marketplace, and, and I'm happy, again, to report, prime contractors have been extremely, extremely responsive in the busy market. And then, of course, we had a significant inclusion effort. That kind of meshed in as, as somewhat of a new process for many of these businesses, has been very, very successful. We continue to work through the eighty-three projects. As I mentioned, there's still one in design, that's Kellum, and we're continuing to work with the campus on that. The next slide here is just a reflection of the current commitments, contracts, and purchase orders, three-hundred-and-eighty-six, or ninety-two percent of the total program. Just to note, Dodge and Boyd, the contracts for those aren't in that commitment value yet. Those are just recently approved by the board, or waiting for contracts to be returned from the contractors and ultimately the board to execute those. Expenditures, again, those are actual checks and dollars that have gone out of the, the district office for payment. So in that forecasted commitments amount, again, is the Dodge and Boyd projects, because that's still in the forecasted, and that'll move over once the actual contracts are, are executed. We continue to monitor and make recommendations on, on program contingencies, spending to meet the needs that are identified, or unforeseen conditions. All of those adjustments are in the monthly report, in a ledger that identifies where the dollars are coming from, from a program perspective, and where they're being allocated to, to what project. The next item here, we have on, is in inclusion. To date, the, the district has worked with seventeen design firms, and those are prime design firms, so that doesn't include subconsultants, mechanical or electrical engineering type of companies. Those are prime contracts that the district has executed. A fairly significant amount of designers, when you think about the overall program. Twenty-four different general contractors or construction managers at risk. Many of those have performed multiple projects, and again, that's a good sign to us that they've ultimately enjoyed the experience of working with the district. They made dollars and cents doing it, so it's been a good business decision for them to do, and they've done it successfully multiple times. So the, there's, there's a good opportunity, again, to, to keep that group broad and kind of provide multiple experiences with the same contractor. And, and again, that's just a good indication of a healthy program. And then ultimately, working with those prime contractors on the construction side and the design side, it's resulted in, in working with a hundred and twenty-five small businesses of different sizes, from different civil engineering firms, and design firms on the design side, and then painters and drywallers, concrete, mechanical, electrical, really a pretty broad array of, of different small businesses have participated in the program. You can see below here on the total commitments that are part of the program, three-hundred-and-fifty-two million dollars. A ten-point-seven of that has been committed to tier-one vendors, thirty-one point, thirty-one million to tier-two, and then the expenditures, again, are closely following those values. The next slide here I put together, just to kind of give you a little bit broader overview of, of the inclusion program. If you remember back in 2014, of course, there was a lot of discussion related to inclusion. Ultimately, we were able to bring a couple of real experts into the conversation, and we built a program. Inside of the approved plan by the board was an aspirational goal. We, we really understood at that time, there wasn't a bunch of data for us to base a goal on, but we tried to understand what was in the marketplace and current capacities. What you see here now is the total SEB contract commitments, forty-one-point-seven million dollars, with, again, payments of thirty-three million. And just for kind of a visual reference, if the plan, if we just stuck to the goal or the aspirational goal of seven percent, that would be twenty-two-point-two, or twenty-two-point-seven million dollars, and that's represented by kind of that faint blue line. You can see, of course, the, the expenditures and the commitments has far exceeded that goal. So, you know, one of the things that we, we said upfront, and, and when Gabrielle and Galitha were here, and the, the plan, we didn't want to rest on a goal and just kind of reach that goal. We really wanted to make sure it can, can be as great as it can be. And the forty-one-point-seven isn't the end, there's additional projects that will factor in. I kind of mentioned the Boyd and Dodge projects, so that will increase the overall commitment. And then along the way through the course of projects, there's opportunities to, to increase contracts with small businesses based on additional scope and change order. So just wanted to make sure, had a chance to kind of underscore the overall importance of that. This document here is really a document that we use to, to program and coordinate work across all of the different district departments, from transportation, nutrition services, information, technology, environmental, library services, really all of the departments that are impacted by the bond program. We lead the coordination effort and all of that. In, in operations is a significant part of it, they're not the only part of it, but right now, they're out hustling around, moving schools. For example, Florence is moving back to their new facility, that's finishing up, and it'll be ready for the kiddos when they return in August. A different facility, Boyd's going to move into the Mills Building, so lots of those moving parts. But again, it doesn't just kind of happen, we need to make sure we're having good, clear communication with all of those parts and pieces. Then ultimately, each group, including us, go back to their departments, if their nutrition services, and talk with their kitchen staff, for example. And if it's school-related, we go back and communicate with the principal building engineer. So, again, just wanted to give a, a little bit of insight on the other things that absolutely have to occur through the process of overseeing and delivering a successful program. Onto some of the, the project specifics, Thirty-second and Burt, of course, just south of, of the TAC building here. Progress is, is moving along well, it's about twenty percent complete. It's scheduled to be ready for the completion in August of nineteen. One of the unique things about this project is, because of its relationship to the TAC building, logistically, we're actually going to connect some of the utilities from the new school building to the TAC building, and that will give us the ability to temper the loop. The loop is all the piping and, and water utilized to heat and cool the building, and given that TAC is such a large energy source, that'll, that'll give the, the Burt Street campus the ability to not have to run equipment as office, because they'll be able to use the TAC basically as kind of their energy source. So pretty significant capability, if you will, from a green initiative perspective, just because logistically we're close. So at some point here in the summer, you know, Burt Street will get a little bit tore open, but that's because we're interconnecting an elementary school to the TAC building. A really, really nice energy, sustainable feature to have. Colombian Elementary School recently had a groundbreaking, I believe, on May seventh. Very exciting day for the community, very well attended. Work is continuing to progress, they're about fifteen percent complete. Brand-new school, four-hundred-and-fifty students. One of the things that's going to be great about this project is, the existing campus will remain fully functional it is today. Kiddos will have a real, you know, bird's-eye view, basically, of, of seeing this new construction go up. It's a multi-story building, so they'll be able to have pretty good perspective on all the work and actions that take place inside of that facility. Florence Elementary School, as I mentioned, it's nearing completion, it'll be ready in August for the students. Not only updated the existing school mechanical and electrical systems and architectural finishes, also excavated a lower level of the facility for a safe area, in addition to finishing out some other aspects. The, the large addition, of course, I think you folks are aware of, is the Boys and Girls Club. That will be opening up around the same time, of course, as the new facility. So just a great example of the partnership that the district has in the community. Gilder Elementary School, another project that will be finishing up for the August of eighteen school year. Kind of had a multi-prong approach from an addition perspective. There's a couple of small additions and a larger one. The two smaller additions really support administration and media center, and then the larger addition is for kindergarten and early childhood. It also functions as the safe area for the building. Also put in a new approach on the north side of this campus to improve bus drop-off and parent drop-off, to get those two separated. Bryan Middle School, a, a project that is scheduled to be complete in August of 2019. In the photos here, you can see they're repurposing or starting the process of repurposing the auditorium. It'll be used as swing space in the interim to support the renovation of the work. This is one of the things that we've tried to do at multiple locations, to really prevent the sunk cost into temporary portables, because they're temporary, you pay those dollars and they go away. A lot of the work that's associated with repurposing the auditorium will stay, it's infrastructure, so it'll support the final configuration of the space. So just a very, very good thing to do from a cost perspective. And then in the lower left-hand side, you can see the, the bulldozer out there preparing the site for a Boys and Girls Club teen center. So this is a little bit different than some of the sites that are coupled with elementary school. A full gymnasium will be provided, some STEM lab space, and just some other things that will couple well with middle schoolers and high schoolers, really because of its location. Another great example of, of partnership. Norris Middle School, working in the final phases towards, again, in August of 2018, a completion date. Many new classrooms have been provided through the additions, and really repurposing of the Norris Middle School space. A new media center, tech and living lab, several other spaces. One of the, one of the most significance from a, kind of a function perspective is, five portables were removed over spring break. That made way for a, a bus lane that's going to move around the east side of the campus, it'll be between the school and the football field. So a lot of excitement about bringing the kiddos off Marin district, a half a mile away, right next to the building. It's a very similar layout as, as beverage from a diagonal perspective. Worked close with transportation, they're really, really happy about the solutions there. It was a really good benefit to be able to complete this work prior to this summer, and, and get the portables out there earlier to create space for that construction to Bryan High School, a couple of things are really occurring at, at Bryan High School, and, and this is a, a good example of, again, of trying to align projects from a scales of, of economy perspective. There are really three kind of distinct projects happening at Bryan. One is urban agriculture, which is, the campus receives some grant funding for, so that's going to be a greenhouse, some additional lab space and classroom space to support that. A second grant-funded component of the project is TDL, or Transportation Distribution and Logistics. It's really expanding that program, giving them some additional warehousing space, and that's really going east of where they are currently in the TDL program. So that's pretty significant. And then, of course, the bond work, and there's three or four keys to the bond work. One, a new auxiliary gym will be built to help support the growth of, of that campus, if you will. Relocating what historically has been the main entrance to the southwest corner of the building, which is quasi the main entrance anyway, so that'll be moved. And with that, some of the administration will move down to that area, again, to keep a controlled building, a secure entry perspective. And when administration moves, it allows some counselors to move, and then some other internal space to be reconfigured into a few more classrooms. So the goal, the goal here at this campus is to get to no port, no portables by the end of the project. So that's the, the target, and that's kind of where we're tracking from a space utilization Burke High School, started work in, in really the spring of 2017. Of course, this is highly visible from the, the Dodge Street Expressway. You can see the large addition going up, the precast has been set, and they're infilling it with the band of masonry, which the, the, the team has done an excellent job of really matching that existing condition, which sometimes can be really, really challenging. A new roof, of course, on the addition, the lower level of the addition is going The lower level of the addition is going to be banned in vocal music. It'll also serve as a showroom shelter for the entire campus. Uh, a couple of key things that are happening this summer. Uh, one is the entry, uh, physically won't change from a configuration perspective, but we're adding some curtain wall and doors and windows. It'll all be, uh, transparent or aluminum, uh, storefront-type product, but really to secure that entry. So, right now, they have a vestibule. You kind of buzz in through the whole vestibule and boom, you're in the school. We're adding some interstitial doors. We've been working with the campus just on flow of students, just to make sure they're not going to become, uh, something that gets wedged open, if you will. Uh, so real excited about that. A card reader system, uh, will be going in, in the, in the entire campus. Uh, other fire life safety, fire sprinkler system, uh, intruder lock functions on the door and hardware of all the classrooms, uh, will also be going in. And then the space where banned and vocal, uh, music is now will get repurposed into a teacher collaboration area and a, um, a computer lab for the students. So, uh, quite a bit of work to happen, uh, over this summer at the Burke Campus, but I think the team's got a pretty good jump on it. And working with the folks over there has been very delightful. Just a couple of more slides. Um, that same day as, as Colombian groundbreaking, May seventh, was also JP Lord's first student day. Uh, he was fortunate enough to be there and, uh, really watched the, the, the expert staff go to work in, in really a, a state-of-the-art type of facility that truly supports, uh, not only the kiddos and, and all of their needs and experiences, but also the, the staff. So, um, I think, uh, most of you folks have had a chance to visit this campus. Uh, on the left-hand side, upper, of course, is the therapeutic pool that raises and lowers. The floor is a treadmill to add additional, uh, therapies if needed. But just a great space where kiddos can come in and experience water at a, a very low level and splash around it if that's what their needs, uh, are or other students that, that need fuller depth, they can have that. The other photo here in the lower left, um, it looks like the band room. So, this campus not only has, uh, their typical classrooms, but is real important for the staff, uh, to have an art room, to have a music space and to have things that would be equitable in a normal school setting for these students as well. A middle photo with the halo lights there is really the sensory gym. A couple of, of images of the corridor. And then on the far lower right, again, is a media center. Another thing that they didn't have, uh, really in the, the existing JP Lord campus, but wanted to make sure they had those offerings for the students, no different than, uh, what you folks or what we would have for the typical kind of Gen Ed kiddo. So, um, I can speak for really everyone on the team that's worked on this project, from the designers to the contractors. You know, these are the types of projects that, that will stay with us really forever. Very, very unique, uh, extremely passionate, uh, building leader, uh, at that building. And it was just, it's just been a real delight to see, uh, the whole process unfold. This here is just a quick slide, uh, to just kind of remind the folks of some of the things. There was a, a dedication to ribbon-cutting at Beverage over the last, a couple of months. I mentioned the JP Lord School opening and the Colombian groundbreaking, breaking, pardon me. Bryan Middle School, uh, groundbreaking and then, uh, JP Lord also hosted kind of a recent, uh, open house. I don't have anything else. I just wanted to thank Mr. Evans, of course, for his time and, and leadership. I won't have probably another chance to do this, at least publicly, uh, over the last several years. And, and again, a very experienced superintendent. It's always nice for us, understanding dynamics in a bond program, large, complex, multiple sites, lot of helpers, I think, as he likes to put it. But he was, you know, a good individual for us to be able to interact with on a regular basis and accessible when issues did arise. What direction do we want to go? What are the options? You know, let's, let's try to get this thing to resolution and really keeping the kiddos centered in all that discussion. So, we just appreciate that, or I do personally, for the last several years, so. And of course, if, if anyone else wants information on the bond program as a whole, bond OPS dot org, all the financial information, uh, from the very first CBOC report we produced a couple of years ago to the most current is available. Uh, and then there's a neat, uh, or handy dashboard that dynamically changes depending on the proj- projects and the filtering, uh, that you want to see. So, lots of, uh, easily accessible information out there. That's, that's it.
Well, thank you so much, um, for the update for the phase-one bond. Um, does anybody have any questions? All right, thank you so much, Mr. Summers. Moving on to J two C. Policy updates. Mr. Pearlman, uh, did, uh, discuss a little bit about this in his, uh, committee update. I believe we received these policies last meeting, if I'm correct, Mr. Ray?
That's correct.
So, you have a hard copy, uh, and this is the first information item. Mr. Ray?
So, uh, Mr. Pearlman really summarized, uh, basically, the, the three policies that came through from the policy committee. First, uh, existing policy forty-thirty-five, which Mr. Pearlman, uh, summarized pretty well. Uh, some additions, those are highlighted in red. Policy fifty-four-twenty-three, non-service animals is not a new policy. It's a policy that was adopted by the Board of Education in two thousand and ten. It's previous policy six-point-three-three. So, it's moving over into your new policies. We just want to make sure we capture the information in the non-service animals section. Again, not a new policy. Field trips, uh, sixty-two-seventy, um, just some updates. This policy was approved by the board in Oc- on October fifth, two thousand and fifteen. Uh, provide some clarification for travel outside of Nebraska and professional leave and non-school-sponsored field trips. So, this will be brought forth as first reading, uh, at the, uh, second June meeting and then on consent, uh, the, uh, first July meeting. So, if you have any input or suggestions, uh, don't hesitate to e- email me those and I'll bring them forward at the first reading at the next meeting. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Godding?
Mr. Ray, you know I'll have questions. On policy forty-thirty-five, second paragraph under F, where it says that legal counselors, chief negotiators shall annually present all specific terms of such agreements, even if they have not been... So, I get that that happens when we annually make changes to agreements, but sometimes, we don't make annual changes. And it seems like, seems a bit onerous, but I don't know. I don't ever remember this happening. And I guess I'm just wondering, from the board perspective, is it something that we should just ask to have sent out or is it a requ- is it something that the committee felt like was important to be brought forward? I just want to make sure it happens.
Okay.
You know what I mean?
Sure, and I'll follow up.
So, I don't know if it needs to be on the calendar or whatever. On policy fifty-four-twenty-three, uh, A, I just think, um, I know this is not, this portion is not new, um, but it might be good just to remind staff because whether you've got a hamster, a gerbil, goldfish, not saying the teachers that my children have had haven't followed policy, but I don't think I've ever signed off on animals being in the classroom. I don't remember all the way back, but it, if we're, if this is our true policy, then we probably should, um, at least put that out there to building principals to make sure that they remind their staff of that. Is that what we're... And then B, I think, second to last sentence, is that supposed to be a question mark or a period? I think a period. And then could you send to us policy fifty-four-sixteen, since that's referenced a couple times in sixty-two-seventy? Thank you very much.
And, uh, following up on, uh, Mrs. Godding's, uh, question about sending this out to letting, uh, building principals, when we annually do policy updates, how do we inform our administration at the, the school buildings as well as staff?
Um, it, it depends on the, the policy. Um, we do provide it in board, uh, updates as part of the board updates and through some administrative announcements as part of the principal meetings.
Okay. Thank you. Does anybody? All right, thank you. Um, there is no receipt of reports. Ms. America?
I move that the Board of Education go into closed session for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the Superintendent, Dr. Cheryl Logan, Secretary to the Board and Legal Counsel, pending litigation, legal advice, real estate, and personnel matters.
There's a motion by Ms. America to go into closed session.
Second.
Second by Ms. Ryan. Roll call.
Hallman?
Aye.
America?
Aye.
Pearlman?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Cassidy?
Aye.
Godding?
Aye.
Ada?
It is still light outside, by the way. Um, let, let me remind the board that the purpose for closed session is for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the Superintendent, Dr. Cheryl Logan, Secretary to the Board, Legal Counsel, pending litigation, legal vice, real estate, and personnel matters. Let the record reflect that the board went into closed session at eight-twenty-five.